United States of America, the United Republic of America stands one nation under God in this court.
All right. So did you want to go into close session, Brian?
No, keep it open. I don't have anything to hide.
Okay. I'm trying to hide from anybody, but. The reason we're here is because that 28E agreement with Jackson County.
Oh.
And.
I didn't know why we were coming, so I don't really have anything prepared either.
That's all right. Anyway, you were told to have Alex to quit, to stop working until we got the new agreement in place, and he continued to work.
I did, but I don't, and I was asked when, and I couldn't honestly answer that. Well, I've got, I, I have gotten where I had made a written demand by email. But that was in, I contacted Alex and seen, and he did not do any thing after that request I sent that request out. It's, it's sent on Thursday, April 11th at 1:59 PM.
No.
No, no, that's, no, I'm sorry. That's Sean sent that to me.
It was sent in November, like November 13th, that I believe. I may have a copy of it.
I, I got it right here. I, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay.
Sean resented to me also as a reminder and stuff. Thursday, November 16th, 2023, 11:23 AM is when I sent it. It says, hello, Brian, I am requesting that Alex Davis does not do any work services for Jackson County from this day forward until some liability issues are resolved. The main issue is workers' comp along with other insurance coverage issues. Sean Harden, our county attorney, will be working on this to make sure the county will be not put at potential liability risk and coming back with recommendations for the board of supervisors. Until all this happens, things are on hold. If anyone needs a copy of this agreement, let me know, because it is void anyway, because it is not extended for one year by mutual agreement or resolution by the board of supervisors. Another thing of concern is there is nothing in job description for this. Thank you, Clayton Ork. So that was sent in November, and I checked with Alex, and he told me he'd, he, uh, so, uh, and he was copied on this, and he said he did not do anything for Jackson County after this was sent out.
Right, but we had originally told him in a verbally in a meeting before that, and there was, work continued to go on.
Do you know when I was told originally?
It would have been when we were discussing it in August.
Let me, I think the first time it went on the agenda for discussion was like August 18, something in there. I'll have to find it.
Well, that was pre-recording their minutes.
That is correct.
So anyway, by doing that, then it opened us up a risk.
What was it? The original 28E still enforcement, because there was no official notice given by any one county to the other to terminate. So I'm correct, that would automatically continue on the existing 28E. Is that correct, Sean? Because there was no official notice sent out by either county.
Uh, well, at that point, yes, but apparently written notice was sent, and it was sent by Otter.
Yeah. What was this timestamp on that? I think it was November or December. Have excuse the one from the county attorney? For engineering.
Engineer, yeah.
December, when that?
December 19th.
That was after. But the claims, correct me, caressed the claims in question were all done before November. I think there's like one, like the first or second week in November is once it quit.
But the 28E that was filed July 21 automatically renewed. Every July 1, it renewed for another fiscal year unless 90 days written notice was given prior to that. So that existing 28E would have been still in place.
Still a working document, correct?
Yes, that's my understanding, if, if nobody gave notice of termination until December.
So I happen then, was, I'm assuming you vote for Alex's new wage?
Well, so that termination letter was terminated, the current 28E to be effective immediately following approval of the new sharing agreement. Which?
December 27th, about when it was signed? And I guess I should say approved here.
And then signed in.
Sent to Jackson County.
Jackson signed it on January 9.
Of this year.
Yes, so the billing would go, I guess, under the old 28E up until January 9.
Would it? And I don't know if I, I don't, wouldn't know if Alex had done any work from like January 1 through the 9th, because that's billed differently. And I know that quarter has already been billed to Jackson County. So it would go up until they signed it, or up until they terminated the termination letter?
Well, the termination is effective upon approval of the new sharing agreement, which wasn't approved by
Following you.
Jackson until January. Was everything, so was the first quarter, January, February, March billed as if it was under the new one?
We haven't, we have like the wage numbers in these agreements, don't we?
What's that?
So we have wage, the wages.
Why is it? Got it? Yes, and the new one, it's 75 per hour. And the old one, it was not that way. And it's kind of a, Karen's more of an expert on me, on that than I am, because she taught Tammy how to do it. I don't do that billing help. There was just a lot of, I'll let you explain it, on billing previous when we, the way the contract.
The billing includes, um, the wages or his hours, and then his benefit. That includes his vacation, sick leave, time, I guess if he used it, but if he earned it, you know. And then his insurance, a percentage of his insurance is et cetera. Also, we would call is included in that. So then they pay what now? 75% now?
75 an hour is what they pay now.
Also, now it's per hour. It's not even.
Yes.
So when you do that, are you including the benefits then or not?
The 28E states 75 per hour.
That's a flat amount.
Correct.
Nothing about benefits or any of that?
That's all included in that dollar amount.
Well, so that all went away?
That's the way the new agreement is.
And that was kind of what was worked out with the City of Independence, so that's why it related on to Jackson County.
So I guess the question is, is when you were given a direction to quit billing or quit doing services, why wasn't that followed through? Is that the issue?
That was, that's kind of the issue.
I kind of brought it to light, because I'm like, I was under the impression that that 28 degree, uh, agreement terminated the 1st of July. That's why we were starting a new one. We had almost $9,000 that we need to be billed, and so then I'm like, can I legally do this without getting in trouble? I, we don't have a problem doing it. I just need some legal guidance.
And it was a good thing that Tammy actually checked, because we had thought that he hadn't worked, and so if Tammy wouldn't have checked, then, or you wouldn't have had to be checked.
I was under the impression that he was not supposed to be working.
And so then we would have.
Maybe it was a misunderstanding. I just need guidance on what accounting attorney thinks we should do. It's your guys' decision also. I'm just stuck in the middle. I just need an answer.
I've been in communication with Jackson County.
I, yes, and I did see that email, Clayton. My concern is the legalities of it. I know they are more than willing to pay it. I'm not going to bill something for an agreement that is possibly not in force. That's my concern.
Well, it sounds like, but I'm seeing here from the old agreement, that was stayed in force until the old one was done, or the new one was done. So that means, and, and I got a statement here from Sean saying that's what he felt too in an email to me. That until the new one taken place, that's $75 an hour, then we go by the billing for the previous one that was in force and had, had expired yet, because still in force.
Well, if I understand 28Es, unless it specifically has a date of expiration, it goes on in perpetuity until it's either canceled or renewed with a new one.
Depending on how the 28E is written, but this is written in that manner, so.
Right.
But the word perpetual is not in that agreement, and that's the confusion that Sean and I visited about the other day.
Yeah. Because I quick looked on Secretary of State's website, and I was like, oh, wow. This expired in '22, so, oh no, now we're really in trouble.
Right.
Yeah, but it was a, it automatically renewed for period, or one-year periods until terminated.
I also have a question on what we should be billing. Like, what wage should we be, be billing?
Starting on
I would say it would have to be from January 1st on, January 20, January 1, 2023?
For what, or 2024? Well, starting, the $75 an hour would start on January 9th of 2024.
Yeah, so from, did I say January? I meant to say July. I'm sorry. This previous, that what is old, July 1 of 2023 through the first week in November is what I'm trying to figure out if we need to build.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I would say that would go under the old two.
Yeah, and that's what I assumed also. And once again, it comes back to, I thought the agreement was terminated, and sitting in the board meetings, I thought there was supposed to be no longer work done.
Right.
I have no skin in the game whatsoever. I just want to know a direction. Do we bill this? Or don't we? That's all I need to know.
So it's pretty much.
Well, I think if he's done the work, he needs to pay, and I think we need to.
Well, we pay a salary, but it's, we, we need to bill Jackson County back is the right answer. And from what I've, if I may speak, from what I've been hearing, you bill them at the old rate up till the, how their agreement was formally in place? And then there's no issues.
And if it took us six months to do the last contract with Jackson County, maybe we should start working on it now. Because in, and his, Alex's wages change usually in July, so I mean, it probably needs to be signed by July 1st, I would think.
The first one was on the agenda.
If, if given the choice, and I should visit with Alex before I do this, um, I would just soon have it ended with Jackson County, but.
Yeah, you too.
We had some conversations with Jackson County that they were staffed up now, that they wouldn't need him, except for any bridge inspections and all.
Well, they were getting, they were working on, they were staffed up, they got the staff they need. But all the certifications has not been completed for the person to do the inspections. They're hoping that gets done. They didn't give me a timeframe on that, but that's what their objective is, so eventually they wouldn't need Alex's services anymore.
Yeah, because we're dumping, yeah, he's, he's got his plate full right now, and then he's got some issues at home.
Oh, and he has, and a, a new baby.
Yep.
He's just going to want to spend time at home.
And then a bigger issue just occurred two, three nights.
The meetings being recorded.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm thinking it would be, if our thoughts about this is to get, like you were saying, Don, maybe start working on things right now. Maybe we need to sell Jackson County, we, we give them their, the required notice that we could need to give them, that were terminated, that give them, that would push them on then to get their certification done for their staffing and stuff, and, and keep Alex home. And then, because Alex now has got these additional, it doesn't take a lot of time, but we've got these additional bridge inspections to do now too.
Right.
And we're taking care of people in our own county.
I would think an informal conversation may be the best way to start that one. He can't just go out, they can't just go out and get their certification, because it takes years of experience. And there are other ways of getting those years of experience too.
Right, but I think my, my biggest concern, my biggest problem is, you know, Alex and what, what's best for Alex, and if that's no longer a good deal for Alex, and I really don't care about if Jackson County doesn't have anybody in place.
Got you. Then we need, then the conversation should be held with Alex. And I would gladly do that. I have no, no heartburn at all with that.
So under the contract that's in place now, 90 days notice has to be given. If we're terminating, 90 days notice to Jackson.
Right.
It doesn't, um, it doesn't have that requirement that it be 90 days before the renewal date. It's just 90 days at any point.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not out of luck, because we didn't give them notice by April 1st. Just know that, you know, if you give it May 1st, it's going to go to August 1st, into the new year. And then, uh, there's a provision in there that, uh, that the hourly rate of 75, essentially stays the same, other than the counties can review it and adjust it annually. If that's going to happen, an addendum has to be filed on the 28E stating what that amount is. It would have to be agreed upon by both parties. And signed as an addendum, and then filed as an addendum to the 28E. If it's, if you guys want to raise it, and they don't want to pay it, that would be, you know, there doesn't have to be a reason to terminate, but you'd have to give a 90-day notice.
Be a deal for them, then overhiring it, outside consultant firm to do the inspections, but it's often a lot more.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, and there's a major issue just came about in the past couple of months on bridge inspections. They just went with the new SNBI rules and guidelines, that they figured the first time to get through is in the vicinity of four to five hours per bridge. And it's pure paperwork shuffling.
That leaves more time on our bridges.
On our bridges and everybody's bridges.
We tried to work with Jackson County too, because we get a service from them, and we don't want to lose.
Lake County is where I really get my service from. They had the same engineer for a while.
That's right, confusing Todd Kenny was.
Yep, yep.
An engineer in for me.
Yeah, and that is ending or has ended. And so they've got their engineer on board and kind of turn over to him, and but they've got the young staff that doesn't have the years of experience.
Well, this to me, this is, if anybody wants to point a finger at me and put some blame on me on this too, I'm fine with that, because we were all players in this trying to make sure we got proper and legal guidance from Sean, just making sure we weren't sticking our neck out on the chopping post. And, you know, it was expiring, we didn't really have a feeling we wanted to cancel with it, we just wanted to make a new one and make sure it was fair for both, and, and the adjustments was made on the cost that we were going to charge for for Alex, and we worked on that some, making sure that the $75 an hour had benefits added into it and stuff, and so I think just wound up being a bad deal, uh, and I just, I would just like to move forward, get the billing out to Jackson County, that timeframe until the new one was enforced, uh, and started. That they just get billed by the previous one, and we just get a billing sent off to them and get this, uh, behind us.
Then what we need to do is visit with Alex, find out what he wants to do moving forward, then bring it back to the board.
And.
And consider, take consideration, like you said, what was going to look, what the future looks like, the extra time it's going to take to do this. We just might, Alex probably can't cover it. There's no way.
That's a concern I've got, and still trying to get some of these plans put together, and, yeah, yeah, that's.
Didn't we have the 28 degree with Kwaski also on bridge inspection? Independence, and who is the other one?
We haven't done any formal agreements yet with Kwaski. We, way in the past, we had.
I thought there was, and I couldn't.
Maybe it's, maybe there's one in effect, but I didn't think so.
I thought there was a new agree, we did, got the independence one done, then we did the Jackson County, and I was thinking there was another one, but.
Did you 28E on, on D, W-35 going into Kwaski? That's in?
No, that's, that's one, that's a whole different.
I think we were talking about it, and then.
Maybe it was just talk, and it never happened.
Yeah.
I mean, we have the, with independences, we probably could just change independence out to Kwaski and.
I would think so.
And that was probably just the talk that I.
Does Lama have one? Does he's inspected?
They have two bridges, but we haven't been doing the inspections yet, but don't be surprised.
But they got to be inspected, right?
They've got to be inspected, every, every publicly owned bridge in the United States, and that's a structure over 20-foot law.
Soon as Lama hears about cities are going to be coming in here for their requests too, I guarantee it.
I would bet so too.
Sure, every city.
And, and they've also got their high on the bridge point system too. So they've been trying to submit theirs for federal funding, and that's an 80/20. Historically, what we've done, saying it's our advantage too, that they have good bridges in the towns. So we intended to split those costs with the cities and administer them, but that's a board of supervisor choice yet, purely.
So, and we probably should have, you know, I, I think back at, sometimes our meetings get a little long and stuff like that, and maybe we should have put the, put it in writing to you to have Alex stop, and then that way you would have also, as, as Alex's boss had something to reflect back on.
Yeah, and I visited with Alex, but I don't honestly, I can't honestly remember whether it was before this, whether it was after this, just when it was. I don't, shortly after Clayton visited with me, but just defined short. Especially six months later.
Well, what we're got, said he did not do it.
Yeah.
Until the new one kicked in.
Looks like maybe we were working on the 28 with Kwaski about grading gravel roads.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's different than the bridge inspections. And on one of the roads, it's actually defined by 28E that we, that we, um, maintain inside the city of Kwaski, and then the Kwaski is responsible for stretch road.
Well, there's really, I'm probably against that, going in and grading inside of a, inside of a city limits, because, and I had a conversation with Sean about this. It's our machine, our employee, inside their city limits, bad accidents happen, the kid gets run over with the road grader, anything happens, that is the liability of the county.
But these, these small counties don't have the ability to do it.
That little spot up there. That's been a problem in that town since I've known.
Yeah, well, they used to have motor grader, and then it broke down.
Not to drag this thing out, but do we have something we need to take action on?
I would say Chris wants direction on the billing, so she knows. So I would say we need to take action on that.
I would like that also, because if something happens and this falls through, or some silly thing, I don't want it coming back on me that I just took it upon myself to do this billing.
Yeah, that's why I say we, I agree, we need to get it in the minutes, that the board, this is what the board decided that needs to be done, and that way you got backing.
But, um, so what was already billed from January 1 to January 9?
I will. I don't know. I would have to look, but I can also go back and, and have Tammy pull the records to see if there was any of those days in there that.
If those were already billed, then, and they were billed at the new rate, do we re, have, I suppose we go back and reimburse the difference?
Yeah, just. Everything always seems to add up to more work in the manager's office. So the day in my shoes, and you will know.
It's a busy office.
I don't care one way or another, I just want in writing direction on how it needs done. If Sean says that the 1st through the 9th, if Alex worked any of those days, it should be billed at the old, per the old 28E agreement, then that's what we will have to do.
Right.
The billing, that, that billing, you know, has already been done then, for that date, them dates?
From January 1 through March 31st, the first quarter has been billed, yes.
At the 75.
Yes.
Let you see if we get a chance.
That's exactly what he's not telling me to do. There was again, it's legalities. And you wonder why I pulled my hair out.
It is not legal. We cannot do that.
No. This is one of those that, um, you know, I think it's 30919, I can't remember off the top of my head now. Uh, but the code's pretty specific. All the terms have to be in a 28E.
Yeah.
For sharing to work. It's not like a side contract. Side contract or something, it's gotta be spelled out and we gotta follow it.
So we've actually to make a clean. Footkeeping trail, accounting trail. We would actually have to give them reimbursement back for that and then at the same time do the billing. The old.
I don't know, does it, the seventy five an hour end up being more than what?
I don't know, Tammy does the billing. Yeah, I don't know, I would have to look.
Sean, it happens where Clinton County comes over, drives our piling, sends me a chill.
Did the new contract, is that the ninth of January?
It was approved by the board December twenty seventh.
Our board wasn't approved by Jackson until.
The the night. Billing's done quarterly, so the night through the end of March. Would be billed at the new contract.
Yeah.
And then anything before that night. That's what I said, that's just gonna make it more messier, so it'd be easy if you could just get direction to say. At first quarter, just. Bill it at the seventy five dollars.
Which is already done.
And then. Anything before that will go under the old contract. Or old twenty eighteen.
That makes those three days or those nine days, if you had any time, not. I don't think that's legal. The January. First through the ninth, if Alex did any time over there, then that has to be under the old rate.
But we don't know if he did anything then or not, do we?
I don't know without running a report.
I truly don't know either.
Hopefully there won't be anything between the first and eighth and that won't be a problem.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, it wasn't why he was offering maternity or anything.
I'll get it figured out. Thank you though.
So the billing in question is. The January period, is that what we're talking about?
July first, twenty twenty three. Through November thirteenth of twenty twenty three. When Brian and Alex received the email from Clayton, I believe it was the thirteenth.
Oh, I believe it was my number sixteen. November sixteenth at eleven twenty three AM.
Okay, and so during that time period, I have eight thousand nine hundred sixty three dollars and seven cents that needs billed. And that was all in an email that I sent to you guys on the eleventh of April, right?
And we really can't make a decision on that eight days in January, cause we don't even know if he did a service then or not. And if he didn't, that's gonna be great.
So we need a motion to. Bill Jackson County. For the amount. Owe to us from July first, twenty twenty three through November sixteenth, twenty twenty three. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, at the old rate.
At the old rate. I would make that motion.
I will second that.
All in favor? And then Chris needs direction from January. First through January eighth.
If any work is done.
Right.
Anything on record on your office on that?
All that I need to do is, I need to run a report out, we do all the billing. I just need to run a report off of the financials.
And we just wanted to, so if we can make it. If we knew that, cause right now until we know that or not, we can't make a decision.
It would just be his timesheet to show.
Right. Either that or this is gonna, whether or yeah.
In the future, if you're given direction from the board.
Donna, I have every intention of, my apologies.
Especially if it involves.
Money, anything, anything.
Now that we got it all sorted out.
Yeah. Still, but we we do, but we still got some liability risk, right? Even though we gotta figure that out.
You're always.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, you mentioned, you know, they, if they had to go to some consulting firm, they'd be paying a lot more of us. Because of the liability, not the work.
Tammy's through January sixth and there is nothing.
Oh, yeah.
Suppose.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, it is.
I just texted Alex, let's go, let's visit on Jackson County.
You can have. That. On maybe Monday's agenda, would you have enough time to visit with Alex?
Yes, and I'd have to get something to Chris by Wednesday, but yeah, I I don't think there's. Yeah, as a matter of fact, I don't think it bothered him if I just made a quick thing, call when we get out of here and visit.
Yeah, and I think she just said.
So then Sunday and Monday.
I have seven text messages for them. Nothing through the ninth.
That was Alex? That was Alex? Oh, oh.
So we don't owe anything between.
That's great.
Yeah, I wonder what the difference is gonna be.
When I see about these twenty eighty agreements, anything like that. It's like you can't put enough writing in there. To really protect you from all liability.
I think the biggest problem is there's a whole lot of lack of communication that goes on. I mean, just like Sean and I visited the other day, when I read that original twenty eighty agreement, there was no word perpetual. So I had it at an end date. And then after he went through it with me, I'm like, okay, yep, I could see how that goes. I said, so going forward, if it's worded that way, just kind of remind me, hey, Chris, this one. Keeps going and it is perpetual, or maybe we need to put the word perpetual in it, I'm not an attorney, I don't want to play a part in it. But. But you know, and so that was part of the reason, because in my mind, the twenty eighty agreement stopped. And I know we had discussed in this meeting, yep, nowhere in writing, the meeting wasn't recorded. We were gonna stop the work down there. But that started in August and it took us till. December to get through it, so. I guess my biggest thing is is communication. It's so difficult.
Well, pardon my. Naivete, I guess, but most of our twenty eight E's do go on in perpetuity.
Yep.
Uh. Whether it's the watersheds or air cog or. Or C and D, whoever it is, until somebody terminates it, they just keep going.
And then there's the termination phrase in there that tells you what the termination guidelines are.
And I and I agree with what you said, John. But going in and. I haven't take the ti- taken the time to sit down and do it, going in and looking what we have filed at the Secretary of State's office. The amount of twenty eighty agreements that we have in there for projects, whether it's helping this town pay bad or whatever the case may be. That were probably done. Fifteen, twenty years ago are still active in there where they shouldn't be.
Probably.
How my, how am I to know this stuff, you know, I think we recently had one with Winthrop with a project.
Yeah, yeah, we did, we did, yeah. Yeah, I lose track of time dawn, I would almost put it to summer before.
Okay, maybe it was summer, well, you know what, that's still an active.
Well, we had one with Fairbank.
Yeah, but my thoughts are that this agreement.
Right.
I don't have that authority.
No, and.
Is it unrealistic for me to say? When we do establish these twenty eight E's. We should not be putting financial information in there as far as what. Is expected. Because that can change every year.
Well, but what we tended, most of these are broke up by based on contract costs. And so we're not, when we say, hey, we're going into the project, we're saying, we're not saying, we're gonna charge you X dollars, we're saying. You get, yeah, we will split these costs or however, in any curve and gutter and sidewalk is your cost.
Okay, so is it fair to say on twenty E agreements where where we're providing a service and the service is going to be ongoing? That those would be perpetual. And then the ones where we're only providing, where we're only doing projects. And once that project is finalized, then we know the twenty eighty agreement is no longer needed, that we change some of the wording so that we can. So that Chris knows that when she entered.
Oh, I will never forget this, I will, I will ask, I will specifically ask. What it is.
But so when, so when we go out to the Secretary of the States, we don't have all these twenty E agreements that are for a project that ended that. Ended.
I was gonna try and pull one of them up because I was thinking there was some verbiage in there that. The the agreement, this agreement ends upon completion of the project. But uh, that's, that's the Fairbank scenario. And yet we've got the corporate line agreements that go on forever and ever and ever. And I can think of meetings in in the past where. Sorry about that, that was Alex. Where they wanted, we've had landowners that want to change who's doing the maintenance on the roads, whether it was, in this case, it was Fayette County years ago, I'm thinking of. We've had the same thing go on where. Delaware County ma- it's time for Buchanan County to maintain our roads, no, you don't switch that way ever. It's.
I just searched uh, on the Secretary of State's website under the twenty eight E's uh, for twenty eight E's that Buchanan County. Is the county itself is a party and there's a hundred and eighty five. The oldest one goes back to January of ninety three and it's indefinite.
Yeah, which one's that?
Uh, Public Safety Commission Agreement, Amendments to the Bylaws of the Buchanan Independence Public Safety Commission. I've not heard of that, I don't know whether that entity. Exists.
Now, by going on that site, you get them all so you can view.
Yeah. Any, well, anything prior to. Uh, before ninety three, the filings are limited to filing identity, date and service type. Otherwise, anything from ninety three forward, you can actually bring. I mean, that one I was just talking about, I mean, you could tell. How old that looks.
Yeah, oh wow.
I think that would be, I would say that the chairman and the board ought to review all of them and see if any we can get rid of it.
I would say the person, the person that is going out and no, and and doesn't have to um. Do, is it, is like, on his lame duck part of his term, should review them.
Do it with Madam Secretary.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take my shoe off and throw it at you. All right, so do we have anything else, any other?
We got to find out. We have to get this thing finalized with the Kowski Bridge, we'll see what they're gonna do, we're gonna do with that.
Here's the statement that was in Fairbank twenty eighty. Uh. Duration, this agreement shall commence on the date that both parties sign this agreement and shall continue thereafter until the completion of the project. And settlement of the financial conditions of this agreement.
And they're resuming their project up there right now, aren't they?
We are done with our portion, other than getting a closeout and the DOT is after us to get a closeout, I visited with Alex on that and he says, Brian. We've still got two months to get this one closed down.
Was that uh, concrete overlay on County Road V sixty two?
Yes, and what should be is number two, duration. Condition number two.
Secretary of State said that expired October first to twenty three.
Okay, we probably had it all settled up then. That was, oh, this is Kowski, this is Kowski in twenty eighty, but.
So with language like that, then if. When it's filed, we can file it.
You just went back in and looked at. And to modify the end date.
That you and I stepped through that the other day on the phone.
Correct. So, once a project is complete. Whoever originally filed it would need to go in and.
Because the Fairbank one can't be done because we haven't sent the final bill.
Well, they never really delete them out of the system, do they?
There, it's it's very important though, when the, when the projects are complete, that. Chris gets notifications, right, that the auditor gets not a notification, because typically she's the one that files them, because. I personally don't trust anybody else to file them, like I don't want to get us in trouble with. A city or something by them saying they filed it and maybe not have filed it or something, cause I've seen, cause that happened.
Like if they, does it mean that they're ar- still archived and if you want to go back for some reason?
They're just no longer active.
Just acting, but it's been archived.
But the, the, you know, the, on their website, they have that one with Fairbank is, would I say October first? But if you get into the. Details of the twenty eighty, it's. Continues until completion of the project and settlement of the financial conditions.
Which is appropriate wording, correct?
When you close out projects. I'm assuming you have to do it for your books anyway.
Oh, absolutely, the DOT audits everything and that's what's going through there, yes. So they make sure you've got all the material certifications, steel certifications. Everything in there, so that's historically what you're waiting for. I didn't ask Alex directly on the Fairbank project, what he's waiting for, but he. He basically said, give me a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, I think part of it is he's pushed on our. Projects, we're trying to get moving in the future. So he's.
Right.
Yeah, I keep saying, if there's any way it can help you, let me know, well. If he's. We're comfortable taking care of themselves rather than trying to mix me in there a little bit and trying to do something.
So when all that verbiage is met and everything's done, it's the financial things, everything's taken care. When you know that project is done, then what we need to do, let Chris know.
We actually let Chris know.
And then she takes it off, gets hold of them and then just take it off.
Yeah, and actually you could say that actually happens when they send us the check for the appropriate amount. And that, Chris would. What's that?
And it clears. I don't know who all you're dealing with.
City of Fair, or the cities, the cities.
Okay, yeah.
But that, that could be issues too.
Less likely the cities and.
We don't want, we'd like to have a check for one, where it.
So yeah, so when does, when those projects are done, just notify the auditor's office so that she knows to go back in and. And change the date on the contract.
And part of the catch there is I don't necessarily hear when the check comes in. That can be delayed too, there's times checks will come in. And the auditor's office doesn't necessarily know what it's for.
That happens a lot, not just your department, because you get the check or the direct deposit and that's all you get.
And no description of what it's for.
Yep, that that's where some of those challenges come into play.
And I think Feen was good for that.
Feen was horrible to deal with.
Are you sure we don't have the grant money? So are we sure we didn't receive the grant money?
I bet if we got a two hundred thousand dollar check. I bet if we got a two hundred thousand dollar check.
Somebody would have said something, you would have been here and.
Is there a way to follow, follow up on your end when you know that the like wait thirty days and follow up and make sure that it's.
Yes, you could always call them and say, have you sent us the check? Yeah, I suppose we could try and figure out some way of doing that.
Janet does have the ability to run um reports in the financial software. So if the Treasurer's Office gets something and it's deposited to one of your revenue accounts, she can run a report to see what's there.
Yeah, and that's where I really need to rely, yes.
Yeah, and then just have Janet notify that that project's closed.
Yeah, let me know it's.
Maybe there's a form of communication that needs to go happen there and back to the courthouse.
So that's, those checks go to the Treasurer's Office, not to your office, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Not always, right.
If there's secondary roads, it depends, sometimes they go to roads, sometime they go to the trip directly to the Sheriff's Office. It's like that with every department, just depends on who's sending a check.
But most of the, yeah, most of the states, the ball goes direct.
Yeah, and I don't deposit any checks for any other, any department anymore. Previously, it was always done that way and when I took office, I said no. Because I feel the department heads need to know what their revenue is, I don't need to do their work.
But, and there should be a separation there too, between the auditor and the treasurer. Okay.
Anything else? We're gonna cause, nothing, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
First and second, you want a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
John, the assessment test.